Hi, I'm Jeremy Crosby.
And I'm Nick Boucher. We're your hosts for the program that's all about your city, Talking Pittsburgh.
Every weekday, we pull together the news, events, and information you need to stay on top of what's happening in the city of Pittsburgh.
Find Talking Pittsburgh on cable TV, Roku, Amazon Fire, Apple TV, and our live stream on the web. Plus, you can find all our headlines and stories on Facebook, YouTube, and our video on-demand service. This is your city.
Keep up with Talking Pittsburgh and the issues affecting you and your neighbors.
Want to know what's happening in your city? Get notify me messages from the city of Pittsburgh. Visit fitchburgwi.gov on your computer or mobile device and select the big notify me button on the left. Enter your email and/or phone number, whichever is best for you to get notifications. Scroll down the list and select all the topics you're interested in to receive email or text messages about. You'll be notified every time one of your topics is updated. Sign up for notify me. One more way to keep up with your Pittsburgh government.
Evening, everyone, to the Pittsburgh Common Council meeting for the August 26, 2025 meeting. The first thing is to call to the order to the meeting to 6:33 PM. And please stand up for the place of a legion. Thank you. Next, we move to roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Radifrada.
Here.
Alder Dancer Jr.
Here.
Alder Gerhart.
Here.
Alder Herps.
Here.
Alder Jutser.
Here.
Alder Ladace.
Here.
Alder Maldonado.
Here.
Alder Regstead.
Here.
Alder Vafadari.
Here.
You have a call, Mayor.
Thank you. So next, we move to item four, public experiences for non-agenda items. Do we have anyone in the, on the chamber who want to speak on non-agenda items? Here, none. We move to number five, the consent agenda.
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, second, but let us say, okay, all those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
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 Any opposed, the motion carries.
So.
I have a motion, Mayor. I'd like to move Resolution R. 12325, that's item 9A1, to right now in the agenda.
Okay, anything else? Oh, we need a second.
Second.
Two seconds. Okay, Logan. All those in favor of moving Resolution R-123-25 after the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
I'd like to move up Agenda Item 8, B1, Resolution R. 12025, to right after the item that Alder Gerhart moved.
Second, the motion.
Okay, so all those in favor of.
Can I ask a question? Sorry, are all the people planning on presenting on that item here?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so. Yes. All those in favor of moving Resolution R-120-25 after Resolution 123-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Okay. So, okay.
And I'll handle 120. I'll move approval of Resolution R. 12325, approving a development agreement between City of Pittsburgh and Bowman Plaza LLC, formerly Warner Venture LLC. And this was postponed from August 12.
Second.
Okay, so are you gonna?
Yeah, I can do a quick summary, and then I'll have Mike speak as well. This is the Bowman Plaza project that we've already spoken about quite a bit. It's five floors of apartments over two floors of parking, plus commercial space, 290 units, market rate apartments. It's a total investment of $70 million. Ellers did a pro forma analysis and decided that a $5.65 million TID Pago bond would be, or a note would be justified. And it would be payable at different rates as the tax increment, as the TIF grows. But they anticipated paid off in 15 years. And, and I think I'm gonna have Mike, Mike will talk a little bit about the importance of this project in particular.
Okay, so, and then I have a couple of people that, you know, they are registered to speak, okay? So go ahead, Matt.
Okay, sure. Thank you for the opportunity. We're really excited about this catalytic project in the North Fish Hattery Road corridor. As you may remember, we reinvested in the generational reconstruction of North Fish Hattery Road some years ago with $28 million, with the hope that if we built the public infrastructure, that the private investment would follow. We're pleased to report we're already well over $110 million. And with this project, we'll be adding another $70 million. So the private sector has definitely started to reinvest in this corridor and really help us transform what developed as the town of Pittsburgh into the city of Pittsburgh of today. And this is one of those major north-south corridors right through the heart of the city of Pittsburgh that we're working to urbanize and densify, that fulfills the vision of our North Fish Hattery Road Vision Plan that we adopted a couple of years back. And we're working with our private sector partner, Ned Hoyt, again, on this project. We encouraged him to go big. So this will be the tallest building in Pittsburgh with five over two. And with that came some complexities, not only from a design of the building, but also complexities involved with the construction of the building. So with that, we've got a TIF request at $5.65. And we've got Keith Dahl, our financial advisor from Ellers, who's gonna take us through the pro forma and BUT4 analysis that Ellers conducted for us as our financial advisors. Keith?
Thank you, good evening. Ultimately, when cities receive requests for public assistance, you want to make sure that you are not providing more than the minimum amount to make the project financially feasible. Certainly, we don't want to unduly enrich any business or developer with public dollars. Because property tax, resources are scarce at the end of the day, and you can only levy so much. So ultimately, at the end of the day, we look at a gap analysis, also called a pro forma analysis, to understand how much public assistance is truly necessary for the development to become financially feasible. We look at it from two angles. One, a return on investment. But then another one is what are the extraordinary costs associated with the development? Here with Bowman Plaza, it is ultimately a redevelopment. And so with any type of redevelopment, you're gonna have extraordinary costs that greenfield development certainly would not have. Demolition, asbestos abatement, you know, removal, site preparation of concrete barriers and items that may be there previously. But also, there could be additional extraordinary costs that are imposed by the city. In this case, the city looking for the developer to do the five over two instead of a four over one. So all of that has been included in the overview memo that has been provided in your packet this evening. The other part, the other avenue that we take a look at with the pro forma analysis is the return on investment. Ultimately, we're looking at the development budget. We're taking a look at their sources and uses. How are they financing the project? What are their financial assumptions? What does the capital stack look like, the structure? We also take a look at the operating pro forma. Look at their rents, their other income projected for their gross rent, for their gross potential revenue. We take a look at what vacancy factor they're using. We look at their operating expenses, and we compare all of these things against what we term general industry standards. We're taking a look at other projects, not only in Wisconsin, but also in Minnesota, within the last six months to a year, to just see what other projects that are requesting public assistance, where they fall on all of these benchmarks and ratios that we look at through the process. So with that, we ultimately did determine that the $5,650,000 of TID assistance is supported and necessary for this project to become financially feasible. I will note that the developer originally did request $7 million, which I believe that is based on the city's policy that you don't provide more than 10% of the total development cost in TID assistance. So through this pro forma analysis, through negotiations with the developer, this is ultimately what is warranted and supported for the project. Now, as for the structure of this TID assistance, we do reference it as a TID bond, as a TIF bond. But there is no upfront dollars that the city is providing to the developer here. It's all based on a reimbursement basis over time, a performance-based metric essentially. They have to build it. The value has to be there in order for them to generate the tax increment to essentially pay off that TIF bond. When we talk about Pago, we're looking at future increment that is generated. Property taxes on the property today, there's a base value associated with it. We're looking at the new value created over and above that, specifically from the property generated by the development. Looking at property taxes paid by the development is ultimately gonna be reimbursed to pay off this TIF bond. So it is a less risky venture for the city versus, say, the city issuing bonds or issuing upfront debt and providing cash to the developer for you to pay debt service over time. The developer is ultimately fronting that risk and financing it themselves, whether they take that to a private lending institution or whether they just cover it with more capital from their equity partners. But ultimately, this TIF bond is gonna be paid over an anticipated 15-year period. The first eight years, the city will reimburse the developers 75% of the annually available tax increment from this property. The final seven years, the city will reimburse 60% of the annually generated tax increment. The tax increment that is not paid to the developer is ultimately retained by the city. And you're gonna be able to use that for administrative costs of the TID. You're able to use that for projects, infrastructure projects within the half-mile boundary radius of the TID itself. So you're able to leverage this development, the tax increment that you're retaining for additional projects within the city. So ultimately, with that, that's just a overview, general overview of the memo. But certainly, I can stand for any questions that anyone may have for me.
Okay, thank you. And also, we have Ned Hoyt. He's a developer, and he wishes to speak or answer questions if needed. Do you want to say something, Noah? Okay, okay. Okay, so, thank you, Keith. Can you explain, because we don't have, can we put on the screen what that $5.6 million will cover? Can you do that, Keith, or you want us to share the screen?
Yeah, let me see if I can share the screen here, and I can show. Let me know when you can see my screen.
We can see it.
Two and three, no.
Okay. So ultimately, the $5,650,000 is covering extraordinary costs. So we have demolition at $250,000. You've got excavation and disposal of contaminated soils. You've got recapping and site vapor intrusion barriers for, you know, natural gases that may be released from the property. This is to protect against that. Parking easement payment to the church, because that is gonna be part of this overall development with how dense it is, with shared parking, undergrounding of storm water. And then we've got the added construction cost for the five over two versus the four over one. And speaking with Ned, the four over one would have probably been a little bit more efficient for him to construct. But that didn't necessarily meet the vision that the city had for this site. So because that was ultimately a requirement of the city to, you know, go big here, we treated that added cost as extraordinary to the development because the developer would have otherwise not done that. And then ultimately, there's traffic improvements that are gonna be needed to Fish Hattery Road. So all of those costs add up to that $5,650,000 amount for the TIF bond.
Okay, thank you. We have a question. Yes, Dave.
Is there any soil contamination from the old stop and go? Gas, that, gas tanks that might have been there? And if so, why didn't the, when the property was bought, why wasn't that negotiated to lower the price, you know?
Thanks, Dave. We did a Phase 1, and then we did some additional Phase 2 testing. It appears that all of the petroleum product stuff related to the tanks was correctly removed.
Okay.
You never know for sure until you actually start to do excavation. There is more risk with an older dry cleaning business that used to be at the facility.
Enough said.
We did.
Enough said, yeah.
Yeah.
Any other question, comment? Gabrielle.
I just want to say that this, I always appreciate the Ellers' analysis and the, all the work that's done on that. It's impressive. This is a big investment in this corridor, but we have already invested millions of dollars in this Fish Hattery Road corridor, and then we also, for the road reconstruction. And then we also have the, it's one of our best bus lines that potentially could become Bus Rapid Transit. So we really want to be putting more density along this corridor. It's a, and this is a good step in that direction, and really a step towards where we want to be building in the future with creating higher buildings, more dense buildings in the places that that's appropriate in our city. So, and we have a developer here that has had a commitment to Pittsburgh long-term. So we appreciate bringing a unique project and taking it in a slightly different direction at the request of the city. So although it's a big investment, I think the Pago model really reduces the risk to the city, and I think it's worth the investment. So thank you.
David.
One more question, you know, a general question maybe for Mike. You know, this will be a nice facility. It really fits in well. We have an older housing stock, you know, that aren't as, you know, people will want to move into there. Have we evaluated the effect it'll have on the older housing stock? You know, I mean, you know, less, that becomes less utilized. And then, you know, you know the cycle how it goes down. Have we looked at that, or are we, you know, I'm excited about this. I just want to make sure the rest of the, rest of the neighborhood, you know, continues to be viable.
Okay, I get it.
I don't know if there's anything we can do about it. I'm just a theoretical, I'm throwing out.
Okay, it makes sense. Yeah, do you want to?
I was just saying, this'll add more market rate housing units. A lot of the older stock that's there is already the naturally occurring affordable housing. So that provides a significant supply of that affordable housing, you know, to the existing residents in the neighborhood. So I think we'll probably see an influx of new residents. And one of the things we're really trying to do in this corridor is to diversify the economic mix, which is gonna help us as far as those retail commercial tenants, as we look at that overall trade ring as far as not only increasing the density, but also the purchasing power along that corridor as well. Thank you, Mike.
Mike, to add to that, sorry, just to add to that. Isn't that also, like, when we talk to Dave's point about the older housing stock, isn't that something that the Efficiency Navigator program is working on improving as well? Or maybe, maybe I'm stating the wrong name of the program. But like, when we meet in SITA and we talk about upgrades to older housing stock as well, isn't that an intent as well to kind of upgrade and make sure that our older housing stock is also safe and kept up as well?
Sure, yeah. And the Efficiency Navigator program is focused on those smaller mom-and-pop, older multifamily buildings, 20 units or less. But one good note that's happening in the North Fish Hattery Road corridor, some of the larger apartment complexes, formerly the Fairways in the Pines, now the Greens, north of the Gulf Course and High Ridge south of it, have been acquired by Trinity Development. And they're investing $20 million in those respective properties there with upgrades to the units. And then we've got Monarch Investment recently acquired the Sun Valley Apartments as well. So we're starting to see some new ownership and some new management, even at Hattery Hill. There's local ownership now, and they've been spending more money in the last six months than probably the last five years with the previous ownership group, where we're seeing reinvestments in the hotel properties there. So all along that corridor, we're starting to see renewed interest and reinvestment there. So that's healthy, you know, for the entire community.
Thank you for speaking.
Thank you. Joe.
It's not in the agenda packet, but is there a map available just so the public can kind of see the geographical area? Or is that possible to pull up?
I'd have to go out to.
And if, while it's being looked at, if other folks want to ask questions? Be more efficient.
Yes, Bill.
Yeah, I just want to say that I am looking forward to this, and I think it is going to spur additional development, which is also a good thing. This, the whole North Fish Hattery Road corridor, I think, can really see further revitalization for quite some time.
Thank you, Bill. Logan.
I won't belabor the points that my colleagues have made, because I agree. I'm excited to see what the future holds here. One thing I did want to specifically call out and say that I appreciate is the parking agreement with the church. I think, you know, if, when a youth has the parking that sits empty for most of the week, and we can kind of double up for the retail and the church, or the apartments in the church, I think that's a direction we should go. And I'm excited to see this in action and be able to point to it as a model and say it's worked here, so now we can replicate it elsewhere.
I'll just add, the church has been a great partner to work with sort of in this, learning each other's needs and trying to figure this out. And I'm excited to see their proposal and support their proposal tonight for SIP as well.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so I want to say thank you, Ned, for bringing forward this project. And, you know, this is the, you know, we have a vision for the corridor, and I think we are putting together a vision. And you have been one of the main contributors of that corridor. And I think that, as Gabrielle mentioned, this is a transit corridor with BRT coming eventually in two, three years. That one is gonna be great to have this density here. So I really support this project, and, you know. So, okay, Joe, what do you need?
Oh, I just wanted to, for the public, just to kind of show the.
Oh, where is it?
Where it's gonna be for any visual learners.
Where my arrow is, is the former Bowman Plaza that'll be redeveloped, starting early next year.
What is gonna be the name of the building?
It will still be Bowman Plaza. We cleared that with Andy. He was happy to keep it.
Oh, really?
Given that people know it as Bowman Plaza, it seemed appropriate to keep it as Bowman Plaza.
Thank you. Okay, I think we are ready to vote. I'm gonna do roll call for this project.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Dancer Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herps.
Aye.
Alder Jutser.
Aye.
Alder Ladace.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Alder Vafadari.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
I just want to give a shout out to our Ellers team, Keith and Greg. Very helpful through this whole process, so we appreciate that.
Thank you, Ellers.
Thanks again to Ned.
So now we move to, okay, let's meet, what is?
I'll move approval of Resolution R. 12025. Second. Resolution approving the police station facility construction bid.
Second.
Public works approved.
Thank you.
Finance approved.
Okay, thank you. So who is gonna speak? Do we have Cory? Who is, where is Paul? Tim? Okay. And I have a couple of people also that wanted to speak on this. So, Tim. Tim, will you introduce the project?
Yes, so this is the, to award the contract to JP Cullen and Associates. And let me just pull it up here. Where is this in? Okay. I don't have a, I'm having trouble opening it. I don't know, is Pepper Construction there that they can go over the contract and the different alternatives?
Jared's here.
Oh, I said Cory to him. I don't know why. Sorry, Jared, I said Cory to you.
Oh. Sorry, I didn't know you were going for me. Yeah, I mean, so, do you just want me to run through bidders? I guess what's the?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, go for the bidders, please. So, I mean, short version is, I wasn't ready for all of this. Give me one second. So we had six bids, five bids, sorry, ranging anywhere $23 million up to $28 million base bid construction. After going through all the alternates, the apparent low contractor is JP Cullen. I mean, I guess, let me just pull up here, what else we? Yeah, I mean, so, long story short, project's under budget. I'm here to answer any questions. I really wasn't prepared to give you a rundown on everything tonight, but I'm happy to answer any questions that the group has.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions for you, but I'm gonna ask first, I don't know, is Paul coming to this meeting or not?
So no, Paul is out of the country currently, or at least traveling. I can provide a couple of other bits on this.
Yeah, can you go, and then I'm gonna call the people.
Yeah, absolutely. If I recall correctly, as Jared mentioned, there were six bidders for this project, which I know in talking with Paul Woodard, he was pleased to see the number of bids. There was about a $4 million difference or so within the spread of the bids. We are certainly happy that the project was bid notably under budget. That is refreshing, in this day and age, to say the least. And it will certainly minimize, to some degree, the cost of borrowing for this project and what the overall impact will be on the city's taxpayers. I will also call out, just in the resolution, that there were some alternates that were identified within the bid. Those are spelled out in the packet. But they are looking at some alternates and moving forward with those. In particular, the one I want to also point out is Alternate 6, which is the door access controls. City staff is looking for approval tonight that would provide staff with the authority to pick the appropriate option that will best suit the needs for the police department and the city as a whole, since the city will be looking to upgrade its door access system for all of its facilities in an upcoming CIP project. So city staff has been meeting in regards to that particular alternate, and we look to make a decision on that sooner rather than later. Ultimately, there's a couple of outcomes with Alternate 6. One could be to actually reduce the cost of the building by about $50,000 to $75,000. If that alternate or option isn't suitable or effective, we certainly would look to use a portion of the contingency that's identified for this program for any costs that might exceed what the bid is.
I have a question about the, you say alternate number six, but that one, the six is not included in the resolution. Is the one, what is?
If you look at the.
It's one, three, and five.
Right, and then it also looks, if you look just below that on the second page of the referral sheet, staff is still in the process of reviewing Alternate 6. If one of the alternates for number six is selected, it'll be done by a change order. So that's where that's at. And then it's also, should be specifically called out in the resolution as well.
Okay, okay. So I'm gonna call some of the people that are here to register to speak, and then we're gonna continue with some of the questions, okay? Can we do that first? Okay. I will call Travis Knoll. He represented the painters' union. Do you want to speak? Okay, can you come to the microphone? And then I'm gonna call Adam Clifford. He's also represents the painters' union. So, okay, so you have three minutes, sir.
Thank you. I just want to speak on some of the stuff that's in that, in the bid document. So I, specific to that AGMT and the NACC language in that bid document. So I probably worked as a glass, in the glass industry for over 20 years, and I currently hold a certification as AGMT, Architectural Glass and Metal Technician Installer. It's a rigorous, third-party procedural, or proctored credential developed by subject matter experts across the glazing industry, including contractors, architects, engineers, manufacturers, and consultants. To qualify for this, you have to prove your work, your three hours, a minimum work history, 7,500 hours on the job, and hold safety, OSHA 10 is a minimum. I did this, I pursued this certification voluntarily to ensure that I can meet the highest standards of quality, energy efficiency, and safety. For building owners and end users, this means peace of mind, the selected product is installed correctly to the manufacturer's specifications, and the building envelope is properly sealed, reducing the risk of mold and water intrusion. and the building envelope is properly sealed, reducing the risk of mold and water intrusion, and that the work is performed by a qualified and certified professional. In addition, I advocate for the N A C C, which is the North American Contractor Certification, excuse me, which is referenced in the specifications for the police department. The N A C C provides a qualitative benchmark for selecting glazing contractors, offering assurance that the contractor has documented processes and procedures to constantly meet the high standards of the building. The benefits of the N A C C for the owner and the stakeholders: reduced risks through improved documentation and minimized errors, enhanced job site safety and fewer construction claims, lower likelihood of subcontractor default, and confidence that the quality is prioritized from production to the completion of the project, and again, energy efficiency. So together, the A G M T and the N A C C represent a commitment to excellence, transparency, and accountability, ensuring that every project that is built to last and delivered with integrity. So my ask is that we can delay the vote to make sure that the contractors that are bidding on this project are in compliance with the bid document. Thank you.
Thank you. So next, I am calling Adam Cliffe. He's representing the painters' union.
Thank you, council, for allowing me to speak. We, the members of our local union, asked me to come and speak to the council on their behalf, basically about a couple of, a couple of concerns they have with contractors that are listed in the bid, in the bidders list that was submitted. So specifically with, as Travis spoke, about the A G M T certification and the N A C C certification for contractors, the two contractors that are listed are not certified to do this work. They do not carry A G M T certifications or N A C C certifications. So that, we're concerned, you know, being, you know, we have a training center here in Fitchburg, and obviously, we value Fitchburg because Fitchburg has been a great community to us with our training center. And we want to make sure that Fitchburg, the residents of Fitchburg and taxpayers in Fitchburg have the highest quality project. We also have some issues, not as many, but there was one contractor on the paint bid list that we have some concerns with. They have, they've been investigated several times. They've been removed from projects for either non-performance or issues with quality, issues with, there was one instance on a Dane County project where they were removed because their, their workers' comp insurance lapsed. So they were removed from the project, which is kind of a big deal. And that's Revere Construction and Services. So we're concerned about them being on the list. We can certainly work with our union contractors to make sure they're, you know, they're competitive. But at the end of the day, when you have contractors that use low road business practices, it's hard to do. So that's pretty much the extent of my comments. I just wanted to make sure that information was out there. I'm certainly open to questions or any kind of feedback here or after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So next is Tracy Griffiths. She's representing the Buildings Construction Trade of South Central Wisconsin.
Thank you for giving us some time on the floor tonight. I'm here today representing the Building and Construction Trade Council of South Central Wisconsin. Our council is made up of 17 local building trade unions, representing over 6,000 skilled workers who live and work across our seven county region. These members are the backbone of the construction industry in our area, leading projects that create local jobs, generate revenue, and build vital infrastructure. Their work also helps foster long-term community partnership and supports ongoing maintenance and developments of the communities we live in. Specifically, I represent approximately 6,000 workers in Dane County, including hundreds of members who reside in the city of Fitchburg. On their behalf, I respectfully urge this council to ensure that the contractors selected for the public projects are those who provide family sustaining wages and benefits and who hire local residents. When we invest in contractors who value and fairly compensate their workforce, then those workers can afford to live in the communities we're building. We not only uplift the working families, but ensure high quality work, community stability, and long-term economic growth. That completes my comments tonight.
Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Next one is Spencer Stotts. He represented the Plumbers Union Local 75.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for taking the time for us this evening. Yes, Spencer Stotts with Plumbers Local 75, represent members across Southern Wisconsin, with a number of them here right in Fitchburg. So I'm here this evening to speak on their behalf. So first of all, thank you for the investment in the city with this project. I think it's going to be a really, really good project. And thank you for considering J P Cullen as your general contractor. They're a, they're a good, good general contractor. I guess my ask, or our ask, is that the council would help J P Cullen when they look at their subcontractor list, to make sure that those subcontractors are all carrying the same scope of work across, across all of that. So it's, it's my understanding that that hasn't been fully vetted. So I would just ask that you take your time to do that. I'd also ask that J P Cullen consider subcontractors that pay good wages and benefits to their workforce. We want that workforce to be able to live here in the city of Fitchburg, maybe in the project that you guys just approved here earlier tonight. Subcontractors should be considered that, that invest in their workers, invest in training, invest in safety. All of those things cost money at the end of the day, right? And those costs are put in form of a bid. And so those contractors that may submit the low bid on bid day, in some cases, don't make that investment in their workforce, in their community. So that, that is all I have to say. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any for me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Yeah, no, we can all, you know.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay.
Now we are open the discussion to the council. So, yes, Joe, go ahead.
I have three questions. So I don't know if I should just do one and then let other people speak, or, okay. So my first question is about process, and I know we've like discussed this a little bit, and I had a conversation with Spencer. What, what is the council's power in, I mean, from my understanding, we're the ones that approve the general contractor, and then it's the general contractor's discretion to choose the subcontractors. So essentially, that means we have soft power, and we can ask and urge, but not necessarily decide the subcontractors. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
We cannot mandate.
We can't mandate. Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. I guess my question, maybe to you, or, I don't know if anybody from J P Cullen is there, but there was a claim about kind of the practices of some of the subcontractors on the list. And I'm wondering if there's, if folks can kind of respond to that, like, I'm paraphrasing, but kind of shady business practices, shortcuts, things like that. Can that be spoken to of some of the folks that were listed?
I mean, I can't speak to the shortcuts on like the labor front, so to speak, like what they're paying their workers, skilled, you know, safety, training. But the comment about the glazing certification, if in fact that is listed in that specification, that would be something then that I would, we would work as a team with the architect to ensure that whatever's being submitted on for that product meets that certification that's in the specification.
I also heard him mention like removal of, like, one of the contractors got, subcontractors basically got kind of removed from several projects. Do we have info on kind of their history and why, and like what's caused these things?
I mean, Cullen would be better suited to answer who they're going to hire. I know some companies have a vetting process called like a pre-qualification.
Okay.
Prior, but that's not going to sniff out if they got kicked off a job for, for some reason.
And do we have anybody from Cullen on the Zoom, or?
I think we just have the architect. I don't think Cullen was present for this.
Yeah, so Elizabeth Cerny, is she at the architect?
She's with F G M, correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
What I can do, Alder Maldonado, is Paul Woodard, who's a senior engineer who's coordinating this project, he's out of town this evening, so he was unable to make this meeting. But I will have a conversation with him specifically about the testimony that was provided this evening. I know that he's already aware of some of the comments that had been intended to be shared. And he can have a conversation with Cullen and make sure that they're aware of some of the comments that were presented this evening, and ensure that we're getting the quality work that the council, city staff, and our community expects. And of course, we'll still have a construction management firm onboard throughout the entire project who will help serve as a representative of the city to ensure that we're getting a high quality product as well.
Okay. I have other questions, but I'll let other alders speak first.
Let's go with Nicole, and then you, Dave, okay?
I will just ask the one question then, to keep things, my second question is very short. Kind of on Alder Maldonado's point, I think it might be interesting, and maybe this is something we can discuss at like committee of the whole, but we choose the contractor, but we don't choose the subcontractors. And I think it would be really cool to like consider the points that you all brought up as like, I don't know if it's a resolution or an ordinance or a policy that we look at to really publish in the future and just say, hey, these are the guidelines of what we as Fitchburg really love to see in our projects that are bid. Because from my understanding, we, we don't have a policy like that currently. And so I don't know that that should stop this project. But Jared, to your point, like, if they don't have that certification, they shouldn't be allowed to be selecting that subcontractor for sure. And as a small business owner myself, I feel very strongly about paying people living appropriate wages. And so I think that would be cool to consider, again, not for this meeting, but for like a future meeting, to look at like, hey, we're the city of Fitchburg, and as a city, this is what we preference and prioritize in general contractors that we select. I think that would be really cool. And then the only other tiny clarification, or, I just want to make sure, am I reading this properly, that this came in close to $10 million under budget?
Correct.
As a taxpayer of Fitchburg, thank you very much. I am, I am super, super excited, and I'm also personally very encouraged that hopefully this means we can move forward with this project expeditiously, to avoid potential tariffs, to avoid potential upcharges on fees, and to give our police officers the facility that they very much need and deserve, and let our city staff expand into additional spaces. So I just wanted to, it's not often that our plans save the taxpayers 10 million more than we thought, but we really appreciate that. And I think with that previous point of the policy, it's also going to be a good balance to make sure that $10 million savings, you know, if it's $9 million and we pick subcontractors that are paid living wages, that's cool too. So, thanks.
Thank you. Dave?
Trade unions for coming and speaking tonight. I grew up in a union family. Just a comment about Cullen, you know, I've worked with Cullen, many projects, some huge ones in this county, which I'm sure you guys are aware of down in Verona, and trades, trades people from probably a six to 10 county area. Most, most of them were from right here if they could, they could find them. And this is a very picky client, you know, I would tell you, that's a very picky client down there. Things had to be done right, and they managed it to that client's satisfaction. So I have confidence in that firm, and hopefully they select the best subs. That's all, all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I don't know what the R F P for this looked like, and whether we can, you know, incorporate things like this in the future. In future R F Ps, not just expressive preference, but say subcontractors must have, you know, these specific certifications. I don't know if that's a reasonable thing to do, but it certainly would have helped, I think, in this project.
Do you want to add anything about that?
Well, I just, I think he was saying it's listed in there.
It's listed, yeah, it's listed.
So that's what I'm saying. If it's listed in there, you can certainly hold them accountable to that. So I think it's, I mean, we just got to work with the design team to make sure that we're meeting. Exactly.
So, so your role as the general manager of this project, you're going to be sure that we address all those concerns from the painters' union and for the plumbers, isn't it?
Well, I want to be clear, we're not addressing all of the unions' concerns. That there was other concerns that were raised here about, you know, misclassifying or labor rates and things like that. Like, that's not what I'm implying. Just, just to the certifications that the first gentleman spoke about.
Okay.
Listed in the specifications.
Okay. Dave, and then Mike.
Not on this issue, but, you know, I asked Jared, you know, the number, I'm ecstatic about the number. Why, why did we miss the, and, you know, Jared and I discussed quite a bit, you know, because Paul Woodard, I've worked with him most of my professional career. And Jared explained, a couple of things factored in. One, post-COVID, we didn't know what prices were going to be. We were, you know, they, they didn't want us to be under. Second, I think some of the sites that we toured, Illinois, they had to buy the land. You know, we had, we had the land basically deeded, given, given to us in spite of what former Alder Allen would have liked to have done. And so those, those two things, and then the bidding environment is better now. So just, you know, I'm ecstatic. Just want to, you know, clarify those reasons why we ended up where we were dead, or some of the, some of the reasons. That's all.
Okay. Mike, and then you, Joe. Mike?
Am I right that, so we can mandate a certification in the R F P boot, are we unable to mandate that the subcontractors be union members? Is that allowed, or is that also something that can be?
I just forward to you some, an email from our city attorney, so, okay.
Okay.
The short answer is, we cannot require that by state law.
Okay.
And we cannot factor that into any scoring criteria either.
Okay. I guess, I kind of agree with what Nicole was saying, in that it would be good to maybe have a discussion in the future about, even if we can't mandate that, to put that in some sort of, we talk a lot in the affordable housing conversations about people that work here being able to live here. And, I mean, this would apply, as they said, to that situation as well. So maybe we can just have a discussion about, even if we can't mandate things, if we can recommend things, if we can put things like that in specification documents, or if there are certification, additional certifications that we can look at for subcontractors that would be relevant, that we could put in as specifications as well. I think would be a worthy conversation to have. And then just to, again, I am also thrilled to be saving $10 million. I am four months into this position. I know that this has been a project going on for 10 years. And so I am glad to be able to get a vote on it and move it forward. I know that there's been a lot of work that went into it before I got here, and that I am only coming in to do the last little part of it. But I'm just, I am glad that we're able to do it and get into a space that you guys can enjoy and really be successful out of, so.
Who is next? Joe, and then Dave, and then Gabriela. Oh, my Lord.
Yeah, two things. There was, one, there was a kind of call from one of the speakers to delay, and I'm wondering, to Nicole's point, if anybody has any idea of what that, the implications of a delay would be? If there's, for instance, a way to kind of hold the prices where they are? Just to, like, if there's more discussion that needs to be done? So just curious about that legal possibility. And then second, if there's any idea to understand what the cost differential would be between some, say, unionized subcontractors versus non-unionized subcontractors to see what, if that would cost an extra million or if that would keep everything level? And I'm looking for like final numbers, not necessarily like speculated numbers if, if that's possible.
So a lot to unpack here. So first question about implications if you delay. Just generally speaking, I just pulled up the bid is good for 60 days from the Cullen submission. I forget the bid date off the top of my head, but we're probably well into 30 days at this point.
Okay.
Looks like July 29th, so coming up real quick on 30 days. Implications on, on delaying? I mean, I would think, are you then suggesting that it would get rebid or it's just, because...
No, I'm just, I'm wondering if like, you know, I, I think what I'm hearing them say is that there's, they want to maybe discuss and flesh out some issues and I'm wondering would, would a two-week delay like stop that from happening? Would it drive the price way up? Would it like basically invalidate everything? I want to make sure that, you know, if, if, you know, just taking their request into consideration, what implications would that have?
I'll attempt to answer that, Alder Maldonado. I think, I think we'd be setting a dangerous precedent and concerning precedent if we're going to try to begin negotiating with a bidder after we've already basically have a contract that's in front of the common council here for approval.
Sure.
I think that that could be challenging not only for this project, but for future projects, whether it's a facility or whether it's a road project where those who are bidding on our city projects are going to become concerned about whether or not the project and the bid that they've put together and ultimately the contract that comes before our common council is now going to be subject to further negotiation at that point in time. And I think that that would probably have a negative impact on not only our reputation, but also the cost of projects, because I think they're going to then look to probably add a premium to those bids, recognizing that their teams are going to have to potentially pivot into unknown areas based upon past things at common council. So I think I would just be very cautious of that. I understand where you're headed with it as far as the, the why behind it. And I certainly recognize the comments and things that were brought forward tonight that are something that we'll need to, to be mindful of as the project proceeds. But I would be, be concerned about a delay and, and trying to have city staff go back and basically try to renegotiate what's in this contract.
And I'll just follow up with, I'd be very concerned on losing Cullen's bid right now. If we come up on that 60 days. From one to two, there was a large chunk of money that the city will be saving, you know? And if that was to get lost in a rebid shuffle, I mean, you're, it's over, it's seven digits, right? So it's, it's considerable money, to be, to be quite honest.
And is that to that second question about cost differential?
I'm just saying if you lose the bid and it has to get rebid.
Understood.
The odds of you getting a, a little bidder of 1.5 million below the next guy is probably not, not the greatest.
Okay, so more just curiosity on my end, I wanted to make sure to give credence to kind of the comments. So to the question about costs, say, you know, that it seems like there's multiple subcontractors kind of in consideration, is there any way to crunch the numbers on what the difference would be between unionized and not? Would unionized labor drive the cost up significantly? I mean, I, I want to speak to Nicole's point that it's something that's valuable and especially in like employing local, you know, residents, employing, you know, unionized folks and ensuring a fair wage. I really value that and I want to make sure we're looking at everything when, you know, before we vote on this.
Okay. Okay, I don't think that we are going to figure out that tonight, Joe, to be honest with you.
Okay.
There's a lot of, you know, consideration when you do union. I, you know, I used to do the accounting for some contractor that they have unions and it's a lot of thing going on to calculate those costs. Who is next? Dave and then who is, Gabriela and Bill, okay?
Jared, just a clarification of state law. No, but doesn't Fitchburg have a ordinance if it's over $500,000, the contractor has to have an apprenticeship training program? I'm sure we have something like that.
We did something a couple of years ago.
We did something a couple of years ago.
Ah, what is?
And maybe that was just for roads.
Yeah.
I don't know, but if...
I'm not aware of that. I mean, I can look through ordinances to see what might be there.
I know, I know we had it.
But I would encourage the common council to take a look at that email that was provided by the city attorney in regards to what we're lawfully able to require in regards to Wisconsin State Statute 66.0901 parent 6M.
Okay, who is next? Gabriela?
So I want to thank the public comments. I thought that was really well said in a lot of ways. I, you know, as we all know, like the cheapest thing is not always the best thing. And we are building a public facility with public dollars that is a public safety facility. And so choosing subcontractors that prioritize safety and wellbeing of their employees and of the process is very valuable. So although we can't dictate that, I hope that Paul, you, you share this with Paul and JP Cullen will know that this council values that. And I'm sure we're going to see change orders, you know? I'm 100% certain we'll see change orders. So if the change order comes because a subcontractor is more than what was estimated because we're, we're choosing a slightly higher cost because of the quality of the work, that is something that I would immediately vote for, yes, for. So I hope that, that can be passed that along, that, that we value the quality and safety and all those things because of the nature of where this money is coming from and that it's not just about the cheapest option. So please pass that on. I think that's an important point. We invest a lot in our city staff and that's one of the few things that we have control over, but we clearly value that. Second, very delighted that we're 10 million under budget. So thank you for all the people that have worked on this for so long. It's, it's been a longer process than I think we even thought when, when we set out to do it. But that's a lot of work that goes into making that, that cost. Obviously, I think there's some luck involved too and timing, but, but there was a lot of work that went into that from a ton of people from Pepper to FGM to obviously all the people that were working on the, and Paul Woodard, all the people that are working on the projects. So thank you for that. Do we know, oh, and I just, JP Cullen, I know they have a great reputation, so I'm really happy to see that the people that were bidding are these really, really high-quality contractors in the region. My next question would be when, assuming this passes tonight, which I'm pretty sure it will, when will we look to break ground? What are the next steps?
I think it just depends on when the contract gets issued, gets executed, and then we have the kickoff meeting with the contractor, but we're targeting late September, early October currently, provided Paul was checking up on the building permit, making sure that that was going to fall in line. But right now it's kind of early fall is what we're, the construction schedule.
It could be as early as later, later, like next month, we could...
Potentially, or early October is the goal.
Hopefully building inspection can, can make sure that permit gets issued. Great.
There's the state submission for the...
Oh, it's the state.
Yeah.
All right, well, we have less control over that.
They're just right downtown. We're good.
Okay, Bill, and then we are gonna close this.
Yeah, Chad, I wonder if you can give us some clarification. Are we, do we have a legal obligation to choose the lowest bidder in a situation like this as long as they meet all of the qualifications in the RFP?
So it typically depends on how the project is, is bid. Generally speaking, yes, we tend to go with the lowest responsible or responsive bidder. And in this case, JP Cullen was determined by the team that reviewed the RFPs, which was led by Paul Woodard, that JP Cullen was the lowest responsible and responsive bidder on this particular project. They went through the, obviously the specifications, the proposals, not just with our own city staff, but others who are in the field here, when I look to Pepper Construction and FGM Architects who do this kind of work for a living, so to speak. So JP Cullen clearly has the lowest bid. They are the lowest responsive bidder on top of it. And I think it's also noteworthy that JP Cullen's been around for well over 100 years in this community specifically. So I think that, while again, there, the comments are certainly noted and are something for us to, to look at, I think that we are very fortunate to be in the position that we are in as a city with a very competitive bid process. And quite honestly, bids that far and away exceeded the expectations of what we were going to be presenting to common council. I'll be honest, a couple of, less than, less than two months before this project was bid, I was concerned that we were going to be coming back to common council and asking for additional money for this project based upon cost runs. And clearly we're, we're not there. I mean, we are in a much better position that we're all sitting here acknowledging that, you know, we're, we're nine million, over $9 million under what this project was, was bid at. And I, I had somebody in our community comment to me that it's almost unheard of that, that the city will leave money on the table, so to speak, for its taxpayers. And I think that this is an opportunity for the common council to do that. You have, have a really good project in front of you. You have a responsible, reputable bidder on this particular project and you're leaving, you know, over $9 million in borrowed money in capacity on the table, so to speak, on this specific project. And that is something that the city is not often able to do for its taxpayers. I will just real quickly in response to Alder Herbst's question, I think you're, Alder Herbst referring to section 1043 in the city ordinances, which does talk about apprenticeship projects in, or participation in public works related projects, which I'm quite confident without being in the business that JP Cullen is participating in apprenticeship projects or programs.
Okay, so the last one, and then I want to speak. Okay, and I, we are ready to vote.
All right, thank you. I just have one kind of process question and I want to thank the folks who came and spoke earlier tonight. This was certainly a, an area that I will not profess myself an expert, so I appreciate hearing your perspectives for sure. It was mentioned that there was a, in other projects, one of the subcontractors that's listed here has backed out or kind of been kicked off of other projects. And I, I would imagine, but I just want to kind of get clarification that if a subcontractor were to back out, that causes delays, which could then affect JP Cullen if they get, you know, if we move forward with this. So there's a financial incentive, a check in the system, if you will, to ensure that we're choosing subcontractors who will do the job right the first time so that we don't have the delays, because if we extend past the, whatever the contract date is, there's a penalty per day, kind of like road projects. Am I correct in that understanding?
There are liquidated damages associated with this project. Yes, that's part of the, the contract. To your point on if a contractor backs out, we would look to JP Cullen to backfill that problem. The contracts with the city and JP Cullen, that'd be a second-tier subcontract. So I mean, we helping represent the city would be leveraging JP Cullen to step in and pull in somebody else to fill that void to ensure the project stays on schedule.
So another question. So under the section of the soft cost, I am glad that we are going to follow with the lead certification. So that one is there included, isn't it? The $171,000 for the lead certification? We're going to do it, isn't it?
We anticipate that we'll be able to still pursue at least part of that. That's a, a conversation that I need to have with Paul and get an update on there. But I know in my last conversation with him, at the start of the month, he was optimistic that we would still be able to at least pursue partial lead commissioning. But ultimately, to your point, Mayor Roda Friday, I do want to just point out for the, for the public and the common council that this project is still being, utilizing building practices and materials that would qualify for lead certification, whether or not the building is actually certified. So it is having solar, it is having geothermal, it does have, have an enhanced building envelope to help with energy efficiency. So we are still obviously utilizing these features, whether or not there's, is true certification.
Okay, no good. And the other thing is there is a tax consultant cost for $50,000. What is that tax consultant for? Is that credit, energy credit, direct pay? What is that?
Yeah, that would be utilized largely to ensure that the city is able to recoup any of the tax credits or direct pays that might still be out there for those energy efficiency-related improvements.
Because I, okay, I want to tell you that it seems, you know, I am in that environment and $50,000 for a tax consultant to that seems quite high. I don't know who is, you're going to be your consultant, but you know what I mean?
I think it was just a placeholder. I don't think that a consultant has been engaged yet. They just wanted to ensure there was money in the budget to cover that expense.
Because there are a couple of firms here locally, there is only one that can provide that level of certification. So we can talk, you know? Okay, so, okay, that's it. That one was my question. And then finally, I want to say that, I want to share something with the council. When I joined the council in 2015, I remember Mayor Steve Arnold assigned me to my first ad hoc committee was the police facility ad hoc committee in 2015. I remember you two were a party, it was a group, a big group of people. I didn't know anything about that, but at that moment, we were, we received the 2014 facility study. So that, that group, our goal was to determine is the city will do an expansion of this, the police facility in this building or it's going to be a standalone building. That one was. I don't know what happened after a couple of months, nothing happened with this project. And eventually a couple of year later, it was put back in the CIP. I don't remember, I think it was 2016, 17. And then since then, we start kicking off this project forward. You know, first we need to do the fire station. Okay, we fire the fire station, then, you know? So, and I am glad to see that after 10 years that I have been practically involved in this process, as a, as a mayor, I can see that we are moving forward with this project. Okay, so I am very happy with that. I think that our officer deserve a modern and very well-designed space to work and also place where they can train and also a place for our, this can serve our community. So, and I want to say thank you to the police department because you have been very patient for the last 10 years. You know, so I want to say thank you for your patience, you know? And then I think we are in a good point now that we can move forward. And I think this is an investment in public safety, okay, this building. So, and I am very happy that we are going to save almost $9 million to the taxpayer. And I, I will ask you for, you know, you support this project. We learned a lot of new thing tonight, how we're going to ask question for future project, what are the thing that we need to look in a bit? And also I want to thank the unions, painted and, and the trades and, and also Spencer for coming here and try to, you know, teach us, you know what I mean, about things that we don't know. But I think that our officer and our resident deserve this building, so I think that we should approve this. So this is my final comment. I want to ask for roll call, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Alder Danso Jr.
Aye.
Alder Gerhart.
Aye.
Alder Herbst.
Aye.
Alder Jettzer.
Aye.
Alder Ladase.
Aye.
Alder Maldonado.
Aye.
Alder Regstead.
Aye.
Alder Buffadari.
Aye.
Motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you to...
Thank you. Okay, so, thank you, Jared. Where we are now? Oh, I mean, straight to report.
I have no report tonight.
Really?
I have no updates.
Oh, I have plenty of updates.
Well, I, there's, there's updates I know that others will be sharing. There's, there's updates others will be sharing and we can be repetitive if you want, but I have no, I have no updates. I know a few of you are going to share a few...
I know a few of you are going to share a few things that I was planning on sharing, so I don't want to step on your toes, so.
You have a moment to shine today.
No, I got other moments besides this. I promise you.
We're leaving a lot on the table tonight. $9 million and Adam's chance to say whatever he wants.
I can tell some stories. Jokes? I don't know. No, I have no updates.
No, no updates? Okay, so if we have any question, we can do it. Yeah, okay, so the mayor report. I want to say thank you to the police department and to the, all the departments that participated in Community Night Out. It was a great event. I don't know if you went there. I've never seen so many people. So it was great. This is becoming like our community event, so I want to say thank you to everyone that participated, especially Sergeant Logan Brown, because he is the champion behind this event. So we are going to recognize him in our next meeting. Also, yesterday, I had the opportunity to participate in the convocation for the Verona School Districts. As you know, we have three incredible school districts in our city. And I went to the convocation, and I want to tell you, we should be proud of the Verona School District. Okay, it was a very, very, it's a great convocation. The governor was there too, you know. And I think that if you had the opportunity in the future to attend, this is something that, you know, you say, okay, great. You know, when people complain, they say, we don't have a school district. I would say, we should say we have three excellent school districts. I hope that Madison and Oregon invite us in the future. But, yeah. So the other thing is, I, we did our District One listening session. I want to thank you, Aldo Maldonado and Herbst, and also Police Department, Fire, Public, no, Public Works, Economy Development and Senior. And also, I had my coffee with the mayor too, and it was like six, seven people show up, and it's great. So I want to say thank you for that. And this morning, we have our visit to the hub. I want to thank the people that went, Micah and David. I think we are going to have another one in a month, maybe. The building is looking great. I have some video, Logan, I'm going to show it to you. So the building is great. I think it's going to be a great addition for that area, especially with all the development coming. So it's going to be grateful for Ned to bring more people in the apartment, you know what I mean? Because that, you know, the playground look great, the bike, what is, what do they call the bike?
Contract.
Yeah, it's great. So also, last week, I, we have a meeting with Metro, the mayor of Madison, and the team, and Ross went there to discuss the BRT, you know. So we are still working with Madison Metro. Maybe there are some, you know, the cost has increased, but there are ways that we can reduce our share part. I don't think that one of the options that we will discuss is if we want the station on the median, on the curve, you know. What we really want is the frequency, where the station are located is, you know, not relevant, but if we can put it in a place where we are going to save money, great. So that project is still coming. We also yesterday did the ribbon cutting for the new park and the Stoner Prairie neighborhood, and it was great. There were so many kids that they show up. Thank you, Micah, for coming. So the additional pickleball court maggot, they are coming along. I don't know if you have been there. Is they already almost done? We need to, what do we need to do? The paint? Is what we need to do?
We need to paint it, and then we also need to put on the fiberglass covering to it.
Yes. Also, today, we have a presentation with a group of young people that they are doing the Youth Government Week. Thank you, Aldo Maldonado, DeLucay, because it was great, you know, to interact with the, you know, the young people that are interested in government, so.
You know there's a future Mayor Julia, right?
Yeah, I saw that.
Yeah.
So, what else? And also, last week, I had the opportunity to go to the graduation for the Latino Youth Academy that the Amigos en Azul, that, you know, puts together every year, and they celebrate practically here in Pittsburgh. So I want to say thank you to Amigos en Azul for bringing that again to Pittsburgh. Most of the kids that, they are Latino, young people, that they maybe, you know, in the future, they want to become a police officer or a firefighter. And then we have started with the budget process today. Fun, fun. So that one is going to take most of my time in the next two weeks. It's going to be the 2020 budget. And I also want to thank you, your Neighborhood Association, for inviting me to the ice cream, the social ice cream. It was great to, you know, to meet new neighbors and, you know, so it was great. So, okay, any question for me? Oh, I forgot. We are doing the September 25, the District Four Information and Listening Session on September 25 from 6 to 8. The location will be the Black Hawk Church. Okay, so please, we are going to start sending the outreach to invite the neighbors. Any question for me? Nope? Okay, so let me see where we are. So now we're moving to Commission and Committee's report, and we will start with Plan Commission.
Thanks, Mayor. I'll start with the resolutions. I'll move approval of Ordinance 2025-019, zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for rezoned request RZ 260225 by Ross Trichell, agent for Sketchworks Architecture to rezone property from PDD GIP, Plan Development District General Implementation Plan to PDD SIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to allow for proposed business development, GG's Playhouse on property associated with 2693 Botanical Drive.
Second.
Plan Commission approved.
Okay, what is this?
This is, there's a local nonprofit, GG's Playhouse, which supports families with children and adults with Down Syndrome. They are building an 8,300-square-foot facility with office space, kitchen, gym, multipurpose rooms, and outdoor play space. The board president of GG's attended the Plan Commission meeting. They serve over 400 families, and they are the first in the nation. This is a national organization. There's multiple chapters, but they would be the first in the nation with their own permanent building. And, yeah, that's, this is the step that we need to get them to the next step. It's at Botanical Drive. It's with that new, all those new apartment buildings that are going up near the limerick, so. And the mayor did ask about them considering a pilot payment in lieu of taxes to help support the, yeah, the city tax base.
A proportion of services.
And the Plan Commission approved this rezone, but also the ADR, the architectural design review for it.
And the other thing about GG's is that they don't have like a, most, they don't have a lot of paid personnel staff. Most are volunteer, and really, all the money that you contribute to the organization goes to programming, and this is great. So, okay. Any other question, comment? Diana is also on line if we have more specific question about the project. Bill?
Yeah, so this is another project with, you know, where the parking lot is like twice the size of the building. I'm just wondering if anybody asked, you know, if we were to bring bus service down there, could we save them some, you know, construction on parking lot? Reduce, you know, reduce the size of that. It just seems a shame to have to build all that space out, impervious surface, and, you know, maintain it forever.
But you also have to consider that some of the kids that go to that place, maybe they need to go transported by a car, you know what I mean?
Right, well, that's why I was asking if anybody, you know.
You know what I mean? So, I don't know. We can ask Diana. We didn't ask a question.
No, yes. Yeah, I can jump in here. We did speak with them about the parking. They did work with us on moving the parking to the back of the building. They feel that this is really what's needed to serve their clientele. And they just, they believe this is reasonable. But we did work with them on the parking.
Okay.
Any other, yes, go ahead.
It doesn't look like the building is set up to allow easy photovoltaic installation on the roof, like some of the roof line is sloping, you know, is facing north instead of south. Was, is that a consideration? Have they, you know, talked about the potential for, you know, energy efficiency and renewable energy, at least in the, at least leaving the door open for future installation?
It's not something that came up in our discussions on this project.
Okay, any other question, comment? You have another one? No? No? Okay, so, all those in favor of Ordinance 2025-0-2019, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I will move approval of Resolution R 14425, approving certified survey map request CS 260425 by Michael Zier, agent for City on a Hill, Kelly Williamson Company, and Bowman Farms, to join lots and create shared easements for a commercial development on property associated with 2924 Fishatory Road. Second. Plan Commission did approve. This is, this is a certified survey map that's really intended to clean up easements and allow both the Bowman Projects and the City on Hill projects to move forward. That's the broad summary, if anyone wants to get into, Diana, I thought I'd been adding more detail besides that.
No, I think that's just fine.
We have Pastor Dave Jacobson, who wishes to speak in support, and also Ned Hoyt, who wishes to speak. No, answer any question. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, good evening. I'm Dave Jacobson, the pastor at City on a Hill. And we've been, we made that building our home about six years ago, and our congregation has grown almost 400% since we moved in. And we love being a part of the Pittsburgh community, and we love being on Fishatory Road, and we love to stick around. And so, when we were approached years ago now by Ned about a partnership, that was one of the things that we were always excited about, you know, as I think as we already mentioned this evening, anytime a shared parking arrangement can happen, our busy times are in the evenings and on the weekends. And, you know, during the day, we do have some usage, but it's not heavy, or heavy usage. And so, the opportunity to share that parking and the drive access with the development to the south was intriguing. And so, we're really excited to bring forward our project. We didn't think it was going to be timed out quite as much. We thought the parking and some of that was going to happen sooner, but it kind of worked out that they're both coming forward at the same time. And so, we're presenting what is going to be, hopefully, a multi-phase project. It's just the first phase. I think that's what's coming up next, so I'll just kind of speak to the both at the same time. But the first phase is just lobby and accessibility. We have one bathroom on our main floor, which is not handicap accessible, and so we're adding handicap accessible bathrooms and elevators, and hope to be able to position ourselves to continue to grow and to continue to serve the community. So we're excited about the project and looking forward to continuing our input and just involvement and ministry here in Pittsburgh.
Thank you. Do you want to add anything?
I'll just briefly, as Alder Gerhart said, right, the, certainly the CSM piece is designed to kind of integrate the three parcels from an access perspective. When we first were encouraged to look at the development or redevelopment of Bowman Plaza and to talk to the church, it was very clear that to achieve the North Fishatory visioning that the city had been working towards, there needed to be coordination. And so, we have had a four-year process of discussion and mutual learning about each other with the church to understand their needs and how to potentially do this, but also with the Kelly's Markets folks to figure out what kind of access do they need for their vehicles, et cetera? How do we achieve the density that the city wanted? And the only way to do that was to do a combined, kind of coordinated, development sort of plan. So while the CSM covers both in terms of providing kind of future access and coordination, the SIP application, which is the next agenda item, is primarily around the church's redevelopment. But all of the parking and all the access drives that are on that are planned for and coordinated with the development of the south, which will be coming to you from an SIP perspective later this fall.
Any question, comment?
I just wanted, oh, sorry, I just wanted to make a quick comment. I just really, like, it's really nice to see a local business and church and community organization working so well with development. And I just, I just wanted to give kudos to you for interacting so well with our city and being a strong, like, actually, truly, community-invested force. So thank you.
Okay, so all those in favor of Resolution R-144-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I will move approval of Ordinance 2025-020, zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for rezoned request RZ 260325 by Ehan Whitney, agent for City on a Hill, to rezone properties from PDD GIP, Plan Development District General Implementation Plan to PDD SIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to allow for a religious and related development on property associated with 2924 Fishatory Road.
Second.
Plan Commission approved. And this is, as we've got a preview already, this is the expansion of City on a Hill Church. There is going to be three phases of this project. This is a, this is really just dealing with the first phase of the project. Oh, no, the rezone is for all three phases, but the ADR that we looked at was just for Phase One. And, yeah, I guess at full capacity, they believe that it'll be 1,000 people, accommodate 1,000 people, which is why I think you'll see the parking as it looks. The current building was built in 1964. And I believe they have, looks like there's visualizations coming up from all, and they included visualizations not just for the first phase, but for all three phases. So you can see the broad thing. But the, one of the things that's interesting about that easement that we just passed is there will be a, an access drive to a Chala Drive, which is a lighted intersection there, which will help with traffic flow. And that's all I have.
Okay. Any question, comments? No? Okay, all those in favor of Ordinance 2025-0-20, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. I will move approval of Resolution R 14525, approving certified survey map request CS 260625 by Gus Newcomb, agent for Newcomb Construction, to allow the subdivision of one existing lot into four lots for a multifamily development on property associated with 2747 South Seminole Highway.
Second.
Okay, what is this?
Plan Commission did approve. This is a certified survey map to split that entire property along Seminole Highway, near the intersection of Lacy Road, into four different lots. Only one of the lots is currently being developed, which we'll talk about next. The four lots, one notable thing is that Lot 1 is a flag lot, and that's a specific meaning, meaning that there's just one access drive onto the main road at Seminole Highway, and the bulk of the property is behind it. So it ends up looking like a flag pole with a flag on it. That's what a flag lot means. And that was designed, it needed a special waiver. They requested that because they believe it'll be easier to sell it as a separate lot rather than just rent it out, and it'll be more flexibility in terms of attracting a client. You may remember that there was an idea for an indoor pickleball facility that fell through a while back, so there are no current commercial clients. But two of those lots will be for commercial, and then two of them will be for housing, as we've talked about before. There was a discussion about a new traffic study, but we decided that a traffic study was not needed, because the original study was for the full buildout of the apartments, and this will only be for, and the commercial, and this will only be for the first building of four buildings of the apartments. So the remaining traffic study is, should be sufficient.
Okay, thank you. So Gus Newcomb is online. Gus, do you want to add anything?
Hi, no, I don't feel I need to add anything unless anybody has questions for me.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Bill, go ahead.
Yeah, so this is, looks like 304 total units here. That's down from, what was the original? It was like 300?
So this is actually just the subdivision of the lots. The next one is about the actual design, if I'm not mistaken. But any specifics about the building, we should wait till the next item.
Okay, fair enough.
Any other question? All those in favor of Resolution R-145-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of Ordinance 2025-021, zoning ordinance amendment granting specific implementation plan zoning for rezoned request RZ 260525 by Dwayne Johnson, agent for Nothi and Bruce Architects, to rezone- and Bruce Architects, to rezone property from PDD GIP, Plan Development District General Implementation Plan, to PDD SIP, Plan Development District Specific Implementation Plan, to allow for a multifamily residential development on property associated with 2747 South Seminole Highway.
Second.
Plan Commission did approve. This is the first of the residential buildings for apartments on that lot. That's the one that's on Seminole Highway and Lacy Road. Just for a little history, we did a minor comp plan amendment to change the future land use to allow this to be apartment buildings. There was a mailing around this, but there wasn't a new neighborhood meeting. This is Building A, it's the southernmost building. The Buildings B, C, and D are also planned. This current Building A would be break ground, or the plan is to break ground spring 2026 with completion in 2027. There is no current timeline for the other buildings, but I think the intention is to do it as soon as possible. There will be a pool, and so, we'll need to do some lighting exceptions for the pool and the courtyard around the pool when the time comes. This is similar in design to their other multifamily developments, which, if you've seen the images, are, are pretty high-quality, market-rate buildings. The design elements we discussed for the ADR, which was passed as well, although there's not here tonight, the design elements are prairie Midwest, there's a broad overhang, shades of green, russet, and rust. There's, it's relatively a simple design. They said it's not a foreground building. The corner has a rust color to set it apart from the rest of the buildings, and there's an abundance of windows and large balconies. There will be 88 units, and they are studios all the way up to three-bedroom units.
Scott, can you share the building?
And maybe Bill can ask his question now.
Yeah, so what was the original number of units that were planned for this development? We're down to 304. I feel like the number was closer to 380 originally?
Hey, yeah, so originally, the number was probably around 380, maybe 400, but I think when we were speaking at that time, we were taking into account the northern lots, and that's not a part of this proposal at this time. It's, it's just the, the southern seven acres there that you see. The two northern lots don't have any proposal out for them yet. So, we, we may have plans in the future to develop on the northeast lot another 50 units with, or on the first level of that one, but right now, there are no plans to do that. So, if we did that, that would bring the total count to about 360.
Okay, any other questions? Michael.
Yeah, this might be a question for Deanna. The, it says in the CSM that there's a multi-use path that's going to be required to be put along Seminole Highway. How is that working with the phase development?
Okay, yeah, I can take that question. So, that, that will, that is tied to the CSM under the subdivision improvement agreement. So, before there is, I'm not sure, I don't think there's going to be phasing in that subdivision improvement agreement, so that would mean that the, the pathway would have to be built before the, the first building was complete.
Okay, thank you. And then, Gus, the, in your comments, you said that you mailed updated plans and renderings to neighbors in the area. Can you specify, like, what neighborhoods or what neighbors you send those out to, just so I can be aware of who's receiving that communication?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't have the, the list in front of me of the neighbors that I sent it out to. I can send you an email with that information easily, but it was the neighborhoods that are directly around the property. It was four neighborhoods, including Crescent Crossing and several others. It was emailed to the, the head of the HOA of each of those, and then if there's not an HOA for the neighborhood, it was mailed to, you know, a point person that can disperse that accordingly. And we received a couple of responses to that email, that it was received, and the feedback was generally positive in those responses, so. And that, that correspondence happened, I believe roughly two weeks ago, one to two weeks ago. Okay, thank you.
Any other question? Okay, all those in favor of ordinance 2025-021, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, thank you.
I'll move approval of resolution R 15025, approving certified survey map request CS 25, sorry, CS 260725 by Tyler Wallen, agent for SubZero, to allow the end of the cul-de-sac of Basswood Drive to shift approximately 90 feet near property associated with 2876 Bud's Drive.
Second.
The Plan Commission did approve this. This actually goes along with the resolution we're looking at later to actually approve the contract to rebuild Basswood Drive into a cul-de-sac, but essentially, this is around, this is near SubZero. Bud's Drive is a private drive for SubZero, and Basswood Drive is a public. Right now, they intersect, and there's two other businesses right at the intersection, right near the intersection of Basswood and Bud's. We are shifting the cul-de-sac to the west, so, or it's creating a cul-de-sac essentially, so that it, that Basswood terminates at a cul-de-sac, and Bud's Road is separate, so they are not actually connected at all, and Bud's can be a private drive. It is going to be paid with TIF, but we'll talk about that at the next resolution, we're actually talking about the contract. But SubZero, it's being paid with TIF increment, so SubZero bid out the project, and, yeah, that's the summary.
Okay. I have a few people-
This eliminates a cut through, a shortcut, I guess.
Yeah, I think people will, this is kind of, it took us some time in Plan Commission to understand what we're trying to do. It would be nice if we can-
Yeah, because right now, Basswood intersects with Bud's.
Because it's, yeah.
And it almost seems like Bud's is a, is a public street. It is not a public street. So, we're completely, like, eliminating that connection. Basswood is a public street, it'll be completely independent, but it has the cul-de-sac there for those two businesses that are along Basswood, so they can obviously still access it and turn around, but Bud's will be completely separate now.
But they also explain why they need to do that. It's about the, the truck that they need to, you know, for the two businesses that-
Yeah. Yeah. They need the cul-de-sac for the trucks to turn around. And it can't just be like, you can't just put like a concrete block there. It has to-
I think we can put that, can we do that, or no? Can we share?
Oh, geez.
Yeah, because it's, so people understand what we're trying to do.
It's page 227 in the packet, I think.
Because it's, I tell you, it took a while to understand in Plan Commission what we-
231, page 227.
But yeah, this, this certified survey map basically allows that, that it's essentially allowing us to create that cul-de-sac. So, that's why you have to shift it in order to allow the public drives no longer to intersect.
Practically, we are, you know, moving that, like, what is, 90 feet, 90 feet?
90 feet. You're, you're moving the circle to the hashed circle?
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so like here to out?
Yes.
And voting yes on this is just the rezoning, not the use of TIF funds to do the construction?
No, that one is, is included in a TIF, so.
Yes, TIF funds is the separate, that's the 152.
That's already included, yeah. Okay. I have many questions.
So, this is what we're doing. It's kind of, yeah.
Yeah, so questions about the TIF and the financing would be for the next resolution that we'll talk about it.
Okay, any other question about this? Do you understand what, do you understand what you're voting here? Okay, yes.
Sorry. I watched the Plan Commission meeting because I was anticipating also being confused. So, thank you to the Plan Commissioners for asking the questions to help clarify this.
Okay.
And the one that I just want to make sure that I'm crystal clear on is, even by moving the, kind of the cul-de-sac bulb to the west, there would still be access to Bud's Drive for SubZero, or is it completely disconnected and anybody, like, employees for SubZero would have to go in one of the other drives?
It's completely disconnected from Bud's Drive. There, I mean, there is access to Bud's Drive elsewhere, but you no longer can access Bud's Drive via Basswood.
Okay. So, this is not a attempt to better kind of clarify that Bud's Drive is a private street? This is actually just removing the access entirely?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, any other question?
I had a question. There was a, there was a comment about the need for better security. We're talking about SubZero, right? Like, that makes fridges and freezers and stuff? What is, what is the security concern? Chad's coming.
I mean, I just put, I, I put that note in there just because they do have actually a very secure place. You don't just walk into SubZero. They control access significantly into their property. So, it's just kind of controlling access to their site.
To their, to their parking lot?
So, this is, Deanna, I can hop in here on this one. So, SubZero has, ever since they really began that facility a number of years ago, and certainly continue to expand it to what the, the size of it is today, has repeatedly mentioned to the city that they have access and security concerns. I know over the years in my prior employment with the police department that there were a number of calls for service related over time to people who are in the property or on the property after hours, some during business hours. So, obviously, just in today's day and age, they want to be sure that it's clear where their property begins. The current Bud's Drive that they have there still appears to be a public street if you drive over there. It's not clear that that's actually a former city street that was transitioned to being owned by SubZero. The other significant concern is, is as people are, are driving on their property, it does create the potential for conflicts with the semi tractor traffic, their employees coming to their shifts, leaving their shifts, and so forth, because if somebody is, is utilizing those roads as a pass-through or they're unfamiliar, it creates a situation where they might not be fully aware of all the traffic that's coming through there at any given time.
Yeah. I think, I, I appreciate that comment, and I think the safety piece actually resonates with me, that, that makes total sense. I do want to call out, I am absolutely not buying the security piece. We have Epic Systems in Verona, we have Exact Sciences in Madison, they have PHI, they have healthcare information, they have way more secure information than fridges and, and freezers, and you can drive on to their private property, you can drive around Epic, you can drive right up to, yeah, you can, Dave. You can drive right up to Exact Sciences.
You can't, you can't get in where the data storage is.
Totally, totally, understandable, but like, you, you can actually, I, I've taken my tiny children into Epic Systems, which is open to the public when it's really cold in the winter, and they literally go down the slides that I used to ride down the slides when I worked there, which is crazy. But I guess point being, this, I, I'm not understanding why this private company problem is becoming a city problem, and with the, I think with the rezoning, that makes sense to me if they need the rezone to do this work, but I'm not really buying this security line. I think that's, it just doesn't work for me, because there's tons of other businesses that secure their buildings in other ways. You can't walk into the Exact Sciences building, for example, without checking in with the front desk and pretty much giving your social security number, like, it gets really intense there. So, I just, I don't buy this whole, like, the street being connected makes them insecure. I do buy the safety semi piece, which I think is very fair, but just wanted to call that out, that that doesn't sit very well with me.
Put it in.
Okay. Bill?
Yeah, I don't know if, Chad, can you tell us a little bit about the history of this? Like, we had some discussion at the Board of Public Works, and it seems that this has been in, in the, in the works for many years. What, what precipitated this, and how far, how far back does it go? And, you know, why did we get to the point where this needs to be done by December 31st of this year, and we only, you know, it was only let in July? You know, we could have had plenty of, we've had plenty of time to, to get this done, and it seems like, you know, maybe it's a good time to announce that August is Procrastination Awareness Month.
Is it real?
Can you shed any light on that?
I, I'm not sure that I can. I think that, I don't know the year in which this first was brought up, but like I said, as long as I've been in this role, which is over four years now, this has been almost an annual conversation with SubZero about when we can potentially look to have this portion of the project completed. I think, again, as their campus has continued to grow, you know, there's these access issues that have, have just lingered out there. I can't speak to, to why it was necessarily bid now with, with the tight timelines, I don't know. I think the mayor mentioned that Tim was-
Yeah, he's, he's online.
Here, so maybe Tim has some additional information on that that I'm not aware of.
Tim?
Yeah, so Alder Jester, the developers' agreement between the city and SubZero wasn't executed till July 23rd, 2024. So, from that point is when we enter, got strand engineering to help us with the design. So, it took that long to design this, put it out to bid, advertise, open it and award it. So, you know, within a, a year, all that happened. You can't design a roadway any faster than that.
Okay. I, I thought we had discussed in Board of Public Works that, that this plan was in place, like, we knew that this was going to happen back in 2018 or something.
So, I, I did a little more research on it. Resolution R 18716 excluded Basswood Drive improvements from the public acceptance of the infrastructure when SubZero was put in. I don't know why it was excluded, I haven't had the time to, to find out why, but that resolution allowed the city to accept all the public infrastructure associated with SubZero, but it excluded the Basswood Drive for some reason. I, like I said, I haven't had the time to, to find out that reason, but since 2016, nothing's ever been done until that new developers' agreement was approved by council back in July 2024. And then, from that point is when we brought, moved through the design, we advertised it, we bid it, and then opened it, now looking to award it. And then, that developers' agreement that was executed in July 2024 is what established that end date of December 31st, 2025. So, it was about 18 months to get everything done.
Okay, makes sense, okay. Any other question, comments about this? All those in favor of resolution R-150-25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries.
Mayor, I have a-
Oh, who has that name? You?
Me.
Okay.
I have more on the report.
Yes.
We passed conditional use 260125 for the EDF Power Solutions, this new solar utility at 2402 Munchler Road. We actually passed this before, but they needed to extend the construction, they needed to extend the deadline, so we had to pass it again to give them 12 more months. There was a delay because MG&E took longer than anticipated, but as I said, this is going to be like a, a utility, solar facility with battery arrays. They plan, they have, the construction has begun with site preparation, they expect to complete it by December of 2026. So, not this year, but the next year. We had two neighbors that live nearby that spoke in support of the project because they want clean energy in the region. And we also issued early permits for LifePoint at Night Springs, which is that UW Health Rehab Hospital in the Night Springs area. They want to get started on the foundation before public improvement, so we did do that. And then, a report from the department, the neighborhood plans are coming to council on November, sorry, September 23rd. There'll be a Plan Commission at our next meeting in September. After that, they will start looking at the comp plan update. And then, Dan, the new associate planner, started about four weeks ago now, and he seems great and eager, and we're really excited to have him. He's got a ton of experience. And that's all for Plan.
Thank you. So, next we go to the Board of Public, Public Works.
Give me one second here. Let's get the right spot. So, I'll move approval of resolution R 13525, accepting a perpetual easement for public sidewalk purposes in Outlet 4 of Jamestown Quarry Platte.
Second.
Public Works- Public Works approved.
Plan approved. Okay, what is this, Dave?
So where the sidewalk's going, it's, it's going to be on, it was on some, some land, not on the road right of way. And so we needed a, constraints of the project, we needed the sidewalk there, so we had to get a perpetual easement from Wingra for, for that sidewalk.
Okay. So any questions, comments? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 135 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Move approval of Resolution R 14125, accepting subdivision improvements to Phase Two in the Platte, a fourth addition to Terra Vessa.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay, what is this, Dave?
Uh, the fourth addition, I think it was 37 lots. Board of Public Works has improved, has inspected and approved the, the additions or the improvements made on this and found it to be acceptable.
I have a question for Deanna. This is Phase Two in the Platte of Four addition. How many phases the Four addition has?
Uh.
Do you know that? I am curious, because I want to know how many lots we have available.
What, the map show nine? There were like nine in there? Or is that, maybe that was Fahy?
Okay, it's not, it's not relevant. I would find out this. Okay. Any question, comment? Oh, Deanna left. Okay.
Deanna could probably answer. She's still on.
Okay. So all those in favor of Resolution R dash 141 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Okay, give me a second. Move approval of Resolution R 14225, a resolution releasing public utility easements in Lot Two of Certified Survey Map 9356 and Lot One of CSM 13261 along Basswood Drive.
Second.
Public Works approved.
Okay. Plan Commission? Plan approved. What is this?
I'll let Tim handle it, but I think this was the water main under the, under the building that we no longer need.
Uh, these were the easements that fall within the, the new right of way for Basswood, so we'd be releasing, they're no longer needed since this land would be under right of way. So therefore, the public utility easements are no longer needed for the municipal utilities.
Thank you, Tim.
All right, thank you. Any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 142 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
Uh, move approval of Resolution R 14325, granting underground electric easement, Outlot Seven in Fahy Fields, Magaw.
I think we need to postpone this, because you postponed it in Public Works and we need to wait 30 days.
We postponed it. So.
Yeah, but, okay. Do we need a motion to postpone? Yes.
I would move postponement of Resolution R 14325.
And before we postpone, I say that, you know, we need this easement, because we are going to move forward to complete this project, okay? Install the rest of the lights, so you will see a budget amendment coming, isn't it? In the future?
Yeah. And Mayor, if I could, if I could add, you know, the reason for, for postponing it, you know, there was, there's not a project for the lights yet, I know they're planned. And our thinking was, well, we don't want them to put the cables in. We heard, well, there's two outlets. To put the cables in, the transformer, the meter, and then we're paying for all that prior to the, paying those monthly usage fees prior to, you know, if, if lights go in there. So that was our main. The conduit is installed.
Yeah.
My understanding, the conduit's all installed and pulled. And MG&E needs, MG&E needs the easement, and I don't think board was opposed to the easement. We just did not want them putting in the, the infrastructure until we were going to, you know, move ahead with lights. You know, say it's a year or six months or whatever to pay those, those extra usage fees to have two outlets there or something like that, seems frivolous, so. I didn't mean to bring up, you know, it's, it's postponed, so I shouldn't even be talking about it.
Yeah. Okay, so my understanding is that we need to approve the easement, so MG&E can complete the work, you know, so, I don't know. We can have a discussion on.
They can have the easement, they don't have to put the cables in right away.
That's true. So we need to postpone to when? September 9?
Yes.
September 9, okay? Okay. Um, are you planning to have that discussion?
Public Works on the 9th, yes.
Okay.
On the, on the 8th.
8th.
On the 8th, and then coming to council the 9th?
9th. That is correct. That's correct.
Okay, thank you. So all those in favor of postponing Resolution R dash 143 dash 25 to September 9, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Anything else, Dave, from Public Works?
Not, not at this time.
Okay, thank you. So next we move to Park Commission.
Only thing I add, we're meeting next week, but the, our first meeting, our first meeting of the Friends of Pittsburgh Parks, kind of creation meeting is, is going to be on Monday the 15th, probably at 6:30. The location will be determined, but it's, we're finally, thanks to Sue Easterday, we're finally getting this thing off the ground.
Okay, good to know.
That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Library Board.
All right. Couple things to note. We approved the latest draft of the 2026 budget. Work is coming along on the tech center renovation. It might be done, it was not quite done by mid last week, but it was moving very fast. We had a presentation about access services, and one stat that I wanted to kind of pull out and highlight for this group is, in 2024, we had 1,270 new library accounts here at our library. And one of the reasons I thought that was interesting was, if we looked at the estimated population growth of the city, it was around 1,000 people. So we're still finding people that are signing up for our library, and I think that strong of a, you know, that strong of a number of new accounts for our library says that this is clearly a very valuable offering for our community. Let's see, and then the last item of note I wanted to pass along was that the Library Board President, Patrick Wilson, has resigned his, the meeting that we had on the 20th was his last meeting. He will be unfortunately leaving our community for another opportunity elsewhere. So Ken Martin will be taking over in the interim, running, leading the Library Board.
And then we are, we are looking for some, a new person.
Yes, we will be looking for a new Library Board member.
Library Board member, okay, so if anyone is interested, please apply. Okay, so, what is it? Commission on Agent Well. Thank you, Logan.
The National Senior Center Month Celebration is on September 12th, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM at the Senior Center, and it will include music by the Red Hot Horn Dogs. I hear they're like really good, and you really want to hear them, and they, I mean, excuse me, Alder Herbst told me earlier about, you know, he was walking to the event, walking away from it, could still hear the music, so it's a great, great event, great time to, to come out and celebrate the Senior Center and all of the great work that they do. The Commission on Agent Well continues to work on its outreach plan to increase attendance of older adults of color at the center. So they are, there is a working group that continues to meet to discuss strategies around outreach. And then lastly, the UW Social Work intern, who will be working with the Senior Center starts on September 3rd, and just if you can stop by, say hello, or if you see, I'm not sure who, who it is exactly, Jill didn't tell me, but I'll get that information, but hopefully they can at some point come to council and introduce themselves, or if you see them around, just say hello.
Alder, how, how did the, the dine, the lunch and learn with the Alders go last week?
I had a family emergency and wasn't there, so could someone else, anybody else want to speak to that?
Yeah, Dave was there. Bill, Gabriela, Logan, Micah.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I appreciate you bringing that up, and thank you to Jill and all the folks at the Senior Center staff, and then also Ms. Hughes for, for coordinating at that event again.
Yes.
And that concludes the report for the Committee on Agent Well.
Thank you very much. So next we are moving to Resource Conservation Commission.
We have not met since our last council meeting. We will meet on September 8th, right after Port of Public Works.
Okay.
Excuse me? Yes, I'm getting to that. Reminder that September 13th is the, the electronics recycling and paper shredding events, that's a Saturday, 8 to 11, on the civic campus here.
And they are still looking for volunteers. So, okay, thank you, Bill. Transportation and Transit Commission.
Uh, we have also not met since our last council meeting, so no report.
Okay, thank you. Community and Economic Development Authority.
Our next meeting is Thursday at 7:00 AM.
Thank you. Ag and Rural Affairs Committee?
Uh, we met, we also approved the solar farm on Wayland and Muchler. A couple of things that came up just during the meeting. Apparently they're using similar panels, but they said that they're 70% more efficient than just the ones in the Sunnyside Project, so that was just kind of a cool note. And also that they are considering using sheep to do the mowing in the field. So that's a cool thing to highlight, just, it's just a kind of collaboration between the sustainability projects and the ag community that just really kind of brings everything together, so it's just something I wanted to note.
That was also highlighted in the Greater Madison Chamber of Commerce big meetup that they have every year. A couple of years ago, I believe, they highlighted one of the farmers in Pittsburgh, and it was a really cool shout out to be like in the Dane County area, which is awesome.
Micah, on that one, that's, that's with the battery storage, I think, that you mentioned. Make sure they've talked to the fire department, you know, that's outside our, outside our urban service territory, and I, I've worked on a number of these, and the consequences of a fire with no water or.
Yeah.
That they, that they've, they plan, you know, there's not city water there, and.
Yeah, I believe that did come up at Ag and Rural, so yeah, so I think they, they did say that they made sure that they had, yeah, they had talked to the fire department to make sure like access was okay and stuff, but yeah, like the extent of the fire, if something does happen, is.
Basically flood the building with water, just to make sure you got enough water. Okay, sorry.
Good point. Okay, anything else? Micah? No?
I had a question. So we got an email from FarmToPower.org, Sunday, September 7th, 2 to 4, there's a solar grazing tour. Is that related to this particular site?
I saw that too, and I don't know.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Interesting.
But it says, yeah, it says it's in Pittsburgh, so I mean, it must be, I'm sure it has to be related.
And it mentions sheep.
There's another project that had grazing.
Yeah, what is the name of the other?
There was another smaller solar project that had grazings.
There was a list of organizations that were in the email.
I can't remember what it was called.
Okay. Yeah, there, there were like several organizations. None of them were us, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Bicycle and Pedestrian Commission.
Yeah, I got a few things. So our next meeting is September 3rd at 7:30 AM. Also wanted to highlight some things, not related to the committee, but to biking. Pick me up at the border. So we basically ride from Pittsburgh to Illinois at night. So 6:30 PM, Friday, September 19th, starts at Seminole Tap. It's, I want to say it's like 40 miles each way when you get to Illinois. I did it once with Ryan Hueselman, and it rained the whole time. But if you're interested in fun at night with a bunch of bikers, please feel free to join. There's registration info on the Bike Pittsburgh website. Yeah. Go on in.
I just want to say, you don't have to go all the way to the border. Some people turn around at the end of the paved path at Purcell Road, so that's about 10 miles. Some people turn around at Belleville for like a 25-mile ride. Some people turn around at Monticello or at Monroe.
Monroe.
Choose, choose your own adventure. And usually you'll have somebody to accompany you if you don't make it the whole way.
But with an e-bike, it's different experience, isn't it?
Sure, yeah.
You might want to, you might want to turn around in Belleville if you've got an e-bike, because that, you know, or, yeah, because who knows how long your battery's going to last.
As someone who has biked from here to Belleville on that trail with an e-bike, you would not make it terribly much farther.
Oh, really?
You would not get all the way to the state line and back.
But, but use, use lights, because it's going to be a, a night ride, basically. The other thing I want to mention, I'll start mentioning this regularly, but there are rides for Joe, not me. It's in honor of Joe Imelkowski, who was the director of Bike Pittsburgh for a long time. It starts at the Senior Center, 10:00 AM, the first Wednesday of each month, May through October, so there's a couple more of them left. I have yet to go on one, but I'd like to. And then, that's all I've got. Oh, I also wanted to note that there is a new Dane County program manager for the Wisconsin Bike Fed. His name's Sean Cobal, and I know Sean's worked with us a lot with Pittsburgh when he's, he was with UW Health, so if folks have an interest in connecting with him, he really wants to do good work in the community, so I can connect you with him if you'd like.
Okay, thank you. EMS. Uh, there was a meeting on August 21st. I was not able to attend as I was on vacation, but there were employee policies and updated finance policies discussed. Okay. The HNI, Healthy Neighborhood Committee, who is in that committee? Donna.
Um, so Jessica is taking a well-deserved vacation with her family, so our September meeting is canceled, and we will meet again in October.
Okay, thank you. Housing Advisory Committee?
Housing Advisory meets next on September 8th at 4:00 PM.
Thank you. Landmark Preservation Commission?
No report.
Tree Advisory Committee?
Yeah, we met, so we got some initial feedback on the Urban Foresty Survey. We've gotten about 250 responses and discussed an overall mission statement for the city within that plan, so that's, once that survey closes, then we'll get the full results. And then, as of the end of the year, it sounds like we will have no ash trees left in city parks, and they will have all been replaced with a wide variety of other species, so hope to avoid whatever, Dutch elm, and then ash, and then something else. So hopefully we can get some diversity of trees and then avoid that in the future.
Okay, great. Community and Equity Committee. So we are looking for applicants.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Oh, you can go ahead.
No, I didn't want to interrupt you. I didn't, I didn't know you were about to speak, I thought you wanted me to do it, I didn't want to interrupt you, go ahead.
No, no, this is the only, I don't know, you have more, but we are looking for members. We have received a couple of applicants, so.
And I just wanted to, just say thank you to the council colleagues for the unanimous vote of confidence in the, in the committee, and I know members who work from, even though, even those that weren't from the beginning truly appreciated to see that. And I think it was a, a huge show of, of good faith in a, in a time of turbulence in our, in our country, and I think the, the folks on the committee were inspired by it.
Thank you, Donna. Okay, so next we are moving to Standing Committee Reports. We will start with the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mayor. I will start with the resolutions. We already did number one, so I'll, I'll move approval of Resolution R 13425, approving of Wisconsin Park and Recreation Association Ticket Program Payment.
Second.
Finance approved. We do this annually. The Rec Department sells tickets at a discounted rate to things like Noah's Ark and water parks, and, and we basically have to create an agreement where we agree to pay back the bulk of those payments to the institutions that they're buying tickets for, but our resident, we get to keep a portion of those tickets, and our residents get discounted rates. And that will happen sometime in the fall, they've been selling them all summer, and we do this every year, and if you haven't taken advantage of it, it's worth checking out, because you can get some pretty good deals on tickets, from what I understand.
Okay, any question, comment? All those in favor of Resolution R dash 134 dash 25, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one.
I'll move approval of Resolution R 13725, purchase of cloud backup storage on multi-year contract.
Second.
Finance did approve this. This is, we, we've been doing this on an annual basis for cloud backup storage, but it's now become more cost-effective to do a multi-year contract. it's now become more cost-effective to do a multi-year contract. Coming to council for the first time, because that pushes it over the, the amount that staff has to come to council for it, so, and we're going to, the Finance Committee asked some questions about the amount of storage, if we're going to exceed that capacity over the multi-year contract, and Misty's going to report back later.
Okay, any question, comments?
So if we, if we vote to approve this, and we don't know how it expands, can, can you speak to that a little bit more, Gabrielle?
I think it's just a matter of, oh, if, if, we might have to, I guess, come back and increase the contract in the future.
Right.
I think that's the bottom line.
Most companies aren't like, no, don't pay us more money for more things, so.
My guess would be that any increase would probably not be within, we probably wouldn't see it again, because like, it has to be, be above a certain amount for it to come to council.
Gotcha, gotcha.
But, I don't know, I could be wrong.
This crosses the threshold because we're doing the longer term.
Yeah.
Gotcha, thank you.
And I suspect that the IT department has planned ahead, and the 175 terabytes we're paying for is probably enough for the duration of the contract, or at least projected to be.
Okay.
And then, the, our Finance Director also gave a report. We had a treasures
We need to
Oh, we need to
All those in favor of Resolution R. 13725, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries.
And then our, the Director gave a report. We have a treasures report for July in the packet, and then budget requests have been compiled, and I guess the meeting with the Mayor is, has, or have started, and the proposed budget for 2026 will be out in the next three to four weeks. So good luck, Mayor.
It's going to be fun. Okay, thank you. Personnel Committee.
Yes, our next meeting will be on September 3rd at 4:00 PM, and we have a pretty packed agenda, so I appreciate the, the flexibility of Alder Maldonado and Alder Vafadari to be able to adhere to that change, so we can make this meeting happen before the next council meeting on September 9th.
Yes, a lot of things coming. Public Safety and Human Services.
Yeah, 12th was it, Donald?
Yeah, yes.
12th, the band, and there will be, if you care to have a beer, the Lions Club will be serving a couple of unsavory characters, Sean Pfaff and Roger Tesh will be, will be dispensing. And we had a number of, number of birthday parties are being approved and licenses. There were three, three new operators licenses and three new renewals, so a pretty light agenda this week, or this month. Next meeting is September 8th, or 9th, I'm sorry.
Thank you. So next, we move to unfinished business. We don't have anything, so we move to new business, and we have a couple of direct referral.
I can cover the first one. I'll move approval of Resolution R. 15125, authorizing, no, approving purchase of hub networking equipment.
Second.
Finance Committee approved. This is basically the equipment that's needed as we finish out the North Fitchett Road Hub community building, and it's a three-year contract for the softwares that will be required, but.
Gabrielle, what's the
What?
The, you know, Parkland Dedication's paying for the building. Are they paying for this equipment also?
That's a really good question, that I don't know the answer to.
No, I think this one is, I think this one is part of the money we already in the 2024 budget, we allocated for the hub, for the operational cost.
Okay.
It's part of that. We are already allocated a money way back in '24.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other question? No? All those in favor of Resolution R. 15125, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Next one. Oh, again.
15225, authorizing approval of Bud's Drive and Basswood Drive Intersection Reconstruction Bid.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Finance approved.
Okay, what is this?
As we saw, that's the construction of that roundabout on Bud's Drive that Tim talked about before. We had a single, single, single bidder on it. They were about, not, near $27,000 over the engineer's estimate, and we're trying to get this done by the end of the year.
Okay, any question, comments?
One thing that we, we talked a little bit about in finance, the total project cost does include more than just the cul-de-sac. It also includes the resurfacing of Basswood Drive, the resurfacing of Bud's Drive, and work on stormwater in the area, so that's why the cost is higher than I would imagine for something that's described there, but it's, it's a lot more to it. And then, the Bud's Drive cost will be paid by Sub-Zero.
Okay.
It's part of the overall bid, but it's like $106,000, and they are paying that piece of it.
Yeah, because that one is a private role.
Yeah, it was unclear in the resolution, but with the sub, the agreement, the developer agreement will come forward, which will lay out the specifics, that's what Tim shared.
Okay. Okay, any other question, comments?
Oh, yeah. Oh, no, and some of that money, the Basswood Drive resurfacing is coming from the resurfacing budget, so there's multiple sources of money, I guess, that's all I want to say.
All those in favor of Resolution R. 15225, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. What's it?
We have one aye. One aye.
Okay.
Next, I'll move approval, Resolution R. 15425, accepting a public pedestrian bike path easement and maintenance agreement and the assignment of Lot 66, Outlot 41 and Outlot 42 in the seventh addition to Nine Springs.
Second.
Board of Public Works approved.
Plan Commission approved.
Okay, what is this, Dave?
This is a bike path going between some buildings, setting up the mechanism for them to stall it and maintain, and maintain it. It will be, it will be maintained by the property owners.
So this one is between Avante and Unity Life Point Building?
That I don't know. It's Tim.
I think it's between two Life Point Buildings, isn't it?
Yeah.
I don't know, here is Tim.
Yes, it is between Avante, who's the subdivider, and ultimately, Life Point Unity would be the one that maintains it.
Okay, okay.
Therefore, the, the assignment document.
Okay, thank you.
And the developers will maintain it.
Yes.
Okay.
Which is good.
All those in favor of Resolution R. 15425, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. So, thank you. We are at the end of our agenda, and then we are moving to the other district reports. And we're going to start with four.
Not a terrible much to update, other than excited for the start of school soon. Can't wait to get back to that. Just want to wish all three school districts and teachers, hopefully, a good and productive in-service week. Also want to thank good boy Drogo upon his retirement. It was very nice to see the dedication of our canine force, and Chico's got some big doggy paw shoes to fill. So thank you to the, the community that was there at Community Night Out, and then just hoping everybody a safe Labor Day weekend.
Oh, yeah, Labor Day. Okay, thank you.
All right, I will let go of the school. You know, get my daughter out of the house, please. Back to school, it would be lovely. A lot of what I have done is, was mentioned already, so I attended the lunch at the Senior Center. That was really nice to talk with residents. I was at the Stoner Prairie Ribbon Cutting, and we were there, actually there the day before, as well as at the Ribbon Cutting. It was packed both times. There were tons of kids there, so that's really nice to see. The hub tour today, I just want to call out, the playground is awesome. It's exactly the kind of like original playground design that I like to see. I thought it was really cool. And then the youth government event today was great. Joe asked a question about what was important to them, and they said things like climate change and women's rights, and like, just, it was just everything that you want to hear middle school kids saying. It was just really inspiring, and, you know, the, the kids are all right, in some places at least. And then, I, in addition to the listening session on the 25th, I will be doing, again, another meet and greet in a park. I'll be at Quarry Hill Park on the 13th at 10:30 AM, so right after the recycling event, so if anyone wants to come say hi, I will be there.
In which park? Can you repeat the park?
Quarry Hill.
Where is that one?
Just Gus Street. So Quarry Hill neighborhood is
Oh, yeah.
Just Gus Street. And then Quarry Hill Park is actually in District 3, so I will ask permission to the District 3 alders to enter their territory. But, yeah, but the neighborhood is in District 4.
Ah, okay, 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 good, okay. Okay, thank you. Three, District 3.
I wasn't able to make it to the Swan Creek Ice Cream Social, but just wanted to thank that Neighborhood Association for hosting that. I heard it was a great event. As Nicole mentioned, like, just thank all of the educators and folks adjacent. Have a successful year, and to all of the folks on councils with children who have, they're going back to school. Hope they have a great year, and then just have a safe and happy Labor Day.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I apologize for my notes being all over the place. My computer decided it didn't want to stay up until 8:53 PM. So I was able to attend the Southdale Resource Fair. It was nice to see, good turnout there. There was, among the many vendors and booths, there was some folks from the city kind of asking, hey, what would make your neighborhood a better place? And the two things that stood out to me were improved lighting and better playground equipment. What's great to share there is obviously we have our Southdale Park Playground improvements coming later this year, and the Rimrock Park Playground Equipment, as of my bus ride home this afternoon, looked like it has been fully installed, and I'm seeing Adam nod, so I'm taking that as a good sign. So we're already making some targeted investments that I think the community will really, really appreciate there. I also was able to attend a introduction with Rooted, that works in South Madison and the Southdale neighborhood. I want to thank Alder Maldonado for kind of helping me build that relationship. It's great to see the work that they're doing around Dane County. I represented Fitchburg on a commission of elected officials from Fitchburg to Dodgeville as part of a study looking at reconstructing Highway 18151 from McKee Road to basically the city of Dodgeville. Certainly a much-needed improvement in project there. Was not able to make it to the Agora Art Fair because of the rain, but heard good things about that. So I guess the other things, what else? Wanted to thank Public Works and Anna Healy for responding quickly to some reports from a certain District 3 alder of some low-hanging trees that were hitting me in the face on the bike lanes and kind of getting in the way. They were really, needed to be trimmed, so thank you for the quick, quick service and quick trim there. And then the last thing I had was, I wanted to kind of just get, get a little bit of an update on, from staff, on kind of what's the status of some roadwork on Sassafras Drive. Had several folks reach out via social media and otherwise concerned about, there was a, there's some work being done to kind of mill and overlay Sassafras Drive in Swan Creek due to the inspiration at Swan Creek Development. The notification went out to, went out to city staff on Monday. It was set to close on Tuesday morning. The public notification didn't go out until after the closure was supposed to have even begun, and then the closure, like, you know, it said for one to two weeks, and they didn't actually begin work until this week. So it's just a lot of confusion, some frustration about kind of the, the tight turnaround from when city staff were notified to when the developer, the subdivider in this case, began that work. So I just kind of wanted to, to see if we have any, you know, I, I know I talked to Tim about this already, but wanted to see if there's any other updates, or if we maybe could perhaps look at codifying into policy that folks, if we don't already have this, to require a certain minimum turnaround time. 24 hours didn't seem sufficient. I certainly didn't know about it until, and until, you know, the night before, and I know plenty of other neighbors didn't know about that, so. I don't know if that's a, if that's a question or a comment, but I'm speaking it into the world and respond as we may.
Okay. We will take the comment. Thank you. Two.
I also attended Community Night Out, and it was outstanding, so thanks to Logan and the Police Department for organizing that, and I just, I had, I didn't go last year, and I just, I didn't realize how much of a community festival it was, like broadly, not just City of Fitchburg, but all of these local businesses, these local, you know, advocacy groups and community groups, and, and there were even farm animals there. I got to see, you know, paca, like, I don't know, it was just, it was wonderful. I, it was a great night, and it was a perfect night for it, so it could not have been better, especially since the park was very flooded 24 hours before, so it was pretty impressive. So nice job on the stormwater facility in McKee Farms Park. I also went to the Senior Center lunch with, with the attendees, met some people that live in my district, and really kind of drove home how important the Senior Center is. There are people that, they go there like every day. It's a meaningful place, and it, it means a lot to people's health and well-being and their happiness, and it's a really beautiful thing, and really grateful that it exists and that people are utilizing it so well. It's, I, I feel like it's money that we spend in the city that is, it's some of the most meaningful money I think we spend, in terms of making a, a real difference in people's lives, and I just really drove that home for me. And the food was pretty good. And then recycling, I, I just do another pitch for the recycling event, Saturday, September 13th, 8 to 11 AM. Always fun. Check that they will take your stuff before you go and bring money in case TVs and stuff like that cost money, so just check before you come, but they do take credit cards, so.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, I was also at the Dine With An Alder event, and I will just kind of echo what Gabrielle said. The people there love the Senior Center. It's, you know, one of the reasons that people love Fitchburg is that Senior Center, and there was talk on the table of how, you know, people bring their friends from neighboring communities because the neighboring communities' senior centers are not as good as ours, so.
I was sitting in one table with all the people that, they are not from Fitchburg.
Yes.
Some of them, they are moving to Fitchburg, so it's great because of that, yeah.
I did attend the Agora Art Fair for a while. I left my house to walk over there, it's about a mile, and about five minutes into my walk, it started raining, and then about seven minutes into my walk, it was no longer raining. So we kept going, and yeah, there's an awful lot of stuff going on at the art fair. If you've, if you've never been, I highly recommend it. And I will throw in a reminder here that all of the tax credits you can get for renewable energy or electric vehicles, those things are all expiring very soon. So like, if you need, if you're thinking about getting an EV
No.
You have to do it before the end of September, because that's when the credit expires. If you're thinking about solar panels or
Air conditioning and
Yeah, heat pump.
Heat pumps.
That's all got to be done before the end of the year, so. Off you go.
Thank you, Bill. Joe?
Engage me in a story really quick. This morning, I woke up very early in the morning. I was awakened by a carbon monoxide alarm. I, it was the loudest and most piercing sound I've ever heard, and I got out of the house, I called the non-emergency line, and then within five minutes, Fitchburg Fire Department was there with their green trucks. They showed up, they monitored the premises, and there was a zero carbon monoxide detected, so apparently that loud, constant noise happens when it's expired, so. I'm renting, so that it's not on me.
We need to check our, yeah.
But they recommended changing all of them, so just a friendly reminder to everybody when it gets about six years in, it'll make that noise. To prevent that noise, please replace your carbon monoxide detectors, and replace your smoke detectors as well, and just, I think something like that, but when it's out, it's, it lets you know. So also, thank you to the fire department. This is just a reminder that when we invest in our essential services, we get people showing up very quickly versus delays that could be life-threatening, and I just wanted to show my appreciation to the firefighters for, for coming. The other thing, just adding to the Mayor's report about the Verona School District, their headquarters in Verona is under construction right now, so they're actually temporarily located in Fitchburg, where the painters So they're actually temporarily located in Fitchburg where the Painters Union was. They acquired that land. We walked through the building, Julie and I, with the superintendent, and it's really nicely done. They actually intend to keep it.
Yeah.
You know, once the new school moves forward. And the superintendent actually expressed a commitment to use that building as a day when he would basically have office, he would be working from there two days a week.
Yeah.
So I just want to say that that's, since he's become superintendent, he made a very clear, clear commitment to have a presence in Fitchburg, invest in Fitchburg, build in Fitchburg. And that's kind of his, one of his promises in, in delivering in Fitchburg. So just wanted to give him, and also the school board, kudos for, for, you know, investing in our community.
Yeah, thank you.
Also, just to add to the kids today, in addition to their commitment to the environment and women's rights, the shortest, blondest boy in the room said that he believed that black lives matter. So the kids are all right.
And the one kid propositioned us all for popcorn sales for Boy Scouts too. So we have some budding entrepreneurs as well, so, yeah.
All of us, all of us bought from them, yeah.
He got us all.
He sold, yeah, poker to all of us. Okay, Dave?
Five, on Thursday night at 5:00, our Allied Drives Dunbarsh Neighborhood has their, has their monthly meeting. If someone would like to attend, let me know, I'll send you the information. If you get a chance, go in Jamestown, Hegel Park with the humidity and rain we've got. We've got gardens with green stuff as big as you can imagine. Next, we've had, I've had a number of complaints from residents. There's another residence and they have a business or whatever, they're not, and they have business vehicles, trucks, trailers and they're parking them on the street in front of their houses. So it's a, a constant, constant one. You'll get a laugh out of this one. I had a, as Chad was listening, you know, we were talking about roosters. And I had a complaint from a resident, I said, let me go over there. And I stood in the front yard and the rooster was cackling, you know. So I went, went up and introduced myself in the. No, to the woman, the woman who only spoke Spanish. And I was trying to explain what I say. Chico Pollo, no permiso aqui.
Gaios.
Gaios, okay. And finally, her son came out and I said, you gotta get, gotta get rid of that rooster, he's gotta go. And he said, all right, well, we'll get rid of him shortly.
Were they Puerto Rican?
I don't know, Joe. I don't, I don't know. I don't know. And then the last thing today, it's kind of significant today, today's the 85th anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment to the Constitution. So who can tell me what that is?
Women's right to vote.
I knew you would know that. So gradually, great, a great moment in our country's history. That's all I had.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so next we are moving to announcements, the next committee.
Are we not acknowledging this picture of Dave and Drago? I, I feel like that's such a like Easter egg to not acknowledge.
Community Night Out, I got to pose with the person, with the, the most, the person of honor or the animal of honor there, so.
Why are you choking him?
You gotta look at the camera.
He's making him smile.
I don't know if he's happy or not.
Looks like it could be a little aggravated, doesn't it? Thank you, Scott.
Come in.
Hey, Drago is still with us, isn't he?
Okay, our next committee of the whole is when? Tomorrow. What is the topic?
We are talking about EMS. And it should be a short meeting.
Okay, it depends.
I am, okay. Mayor, I mean, it's only one topic, so we better not have a two-hour meeting. Chad? Mayor, it's on you now.
Exactly. I don't have control tomorrow. Okay, next common council meeting is September 9th. So I wish you all a great Labor Weekend. So Dia del Trabajo, Lunas, yes? So Happy Labor Day. I need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor of adjourned the meeting at 9:07, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion carries. Wow.